The City Council Meeting for the City of Half Moon Bay. May I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Ruddick?
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
And Mayor Penrose?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? May I have an emotion to approve the agenda, please? So move? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We have two proclamations and presentations this evening. The first is Mental Health Awareness Month. And we have someone here from the county. Is that true?
Hi, good evening. This is Sylvia Tang from San Mateo County.
Good evening, Sylvia. We have a proclamation. Our mental health conditions are one of the most common health conditions worldwide. And the COVID-19 pandemic has triggered a 25% increase in the prevalence of anxiety and depression. One out of every 24 Californians with a serious mental health condition has difficulty functioning in everyday life. And if left untreated, has life expectancies 25 years shorter than the general population. Every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health and substance use conditions and may feel isolated and alone going years before receiving any help. Mental health and substance abuse conditions are treatable health conditions. And people who have mental health and substance abuse conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. Half Moon Bay has joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative where mayors across the 20 cities in San Mateo County have come together with the mission of promoting awareness of and access to mental health resources in their communities. The Half Moon Bay City Council wishes to increase the public's knowledge of signs and symptoms of mental health and substance abuse conditions, professional and self-help resources, and self-care practices. We have created a website, hmbcity.com/mentalhealth, that lists local, regional, and national mental health resources. Additionally, we will be sharing informative mental health resource posts on all of our social media channels. Now therefore, be it known that I, Deborah Penrose, Mayor of Half Moon Bay hereby recognizes May 2023 as Mental Health Month in Half Moon Bay to enhance public awareness of mental health, to help end the stigma, and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance abuse conditions. We do have Sylvia Tang here from the county to share some additional information. Sylvia?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Half Moon Bay Mayor, council members, city managers, staff, and residents of Half Moon Bay. My name is Sylvia Tang. I use she/her pronouns, and I work for the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity. And I help co-chair the May Mental Health Month Planning Committee for San Mateo County with Kristi Louis. And we're very excited that Half Moon Bay is again proclaiming May Mental Health Month for your community. And just really, I'll try to be brief. So as you all know, May Mental Health Month is observed across our county and the state and United States. And in case you didn't know, lime green is the national color for mental health and represents how we want to bring a bright light to important issue that may be hidden or seen negatively. And a few invitations to take action during this month. One is to follow the Half Moon Bay social media and use hashtag #shareforMH to share on your own social media about mental health and spread the word. You can wear lime green ribbon or lime green or green during the month to spark a conversation. We also have a digital ribbon on our website, which I'll share in a bit. And we also really importantly want to encourage you all to attend some local Mental Health Month events, including two that are in the coast, that are on the coast. Let me read, there's two events that I'll share. So one is on Saturday, May 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's called Picnic at the Parks Quarry Park Picnic and History Tour at Quarry Park in Half Moon Bay at Santa Maria Avenue and Columbus Street. And that's hosted by the San Mateo County Parks Foundation Peninsula Family Service and the San Mateo County Pride Center. And the second last event I want to mention is also on the same day, Saturday, May 20th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. At location will be determined, but we'll keep updating our website. And it's hosted by, I believe, City of Half Moon Bay and the Cabrillo Unified School District. And it'll be a great coastside community wellness festival. And yeah, and if you're curious for more information about other events happening throughout San Mateo County, you can, and resources, you can visit smchalth.org/mhm. But I'm so glad you all have your own website as well. So that is it. So thank you so much to the Half Moon Bay community and to City Council for proclaiming May Mental Health Month. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, Sylvia. Our next proclamation is to be aware of and proclaim our support for Jewish American Heritage Month. In 1654, a small ship carrying 23 Jewish refugees sailed into the port of present-day New York City. Fleeing oppression and discrimination, these courageous women and men faced resistance from the colony's leaders. Nevertheless, they secured the right to remain and became the first Jewish communal presence to settle on American soil. In doing so, they expanded the frontier of religious freedoms that would help define the bedrock principles upon which this nation was built. During Jewish American Heritage Month, we honor these 23 refugees and the centuries of successive generations of Jewish Americans who shaped by their own encounters with prejudice, persecution, and the promise of a better tomorrow have emboldened our nation to stand up for justice, equality, and freedom. Throughout our country's history, Jewish Americans have proudly served our nation in uniform, in elected office, and on our nation's highest courts. They have made enormous contributions to America's cultural, scientific, artistic, and intellectual life. And they have marched, petitioned, and boarded buses to demand civil and political rights for all, from women's rights to voting rights to workers' rights. The City of Half Moon Bay acknowledges the valued contributions that the Jewish community has made to strengthen our diverse coastside community. We honor those. That now therefore, I, Deborah Penrose, Mayor of Half Moon Bay, do proclaim May as Jewish American Heritage Month. I call upon the community of Half Moon Bay to observe this month to celebrate the important social, cultural, political, and economic contributions of Jewish Americans. We have Sharon Turner, Coastside Jewish Community President, to share additional thoughts on the contributions of Jewish Americans here on the coast side. Sharon?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for recognizing May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Thank you to you, the mayor, and City Council members, and the community of Half Moon Bay at large. As you mentioned, Jewish American Heritage Month is a time when we recognize and celebrate the achievements and contributions of American Jews. It's also a chance to talk about how important it is to have different religions and cultures represented in our country. The history of the Jewish people is one of resilience, but unfortunately, we've also faced a lot of persecution and hate. This is a problem not just for Jews, but for all minority groups. Everyone, from business leaders to students, need to work together, stop hate, and create a culture of respect. We need to show that hate won't win as we work towards a more inclusive and diverse future. So thank you so much on behalf of coastside Jewish community for recognizing May as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next is Mayor's announcements of community activities and community events. Our Dream Machines went off well last weekend. It was a success. I didn't go, but I'm not into cars and airplanes and all that stuff. I'm glad some people are, and I'm really happy that we have that every year. It's a wonderful thing for our nonprofits. Don't forget the farmer's market on Saturday mornings. Apparently, this past Saturday, it was so crowded, it was really, you had to wait in line to get stuff. So that's great news for our farmers. Let's keep supporting them. On Thursday, we have the first Thursday of the month, Make It Main Street. Again, this Thursday, please come out and help us celebrate artists and local crafts, have some food, drink some wine, and listen to some music. And on May the 13th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., is our annual wine and jazz festival. So that should be a lot of fun. All right. Next, we have report out from recent closed session. Catherine Enberg, our attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session prior to this meeting to discuss one item pending litigation, the City of Half Moon Bay versus Granada and Monterrey matter. Nothing to report out.
Thank you. City manager updates to council comes next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several updates for the council tonight. I believe we'll start with a few housing-related items with our housing coordinator, Mike Noche.
Check, check. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mike Noche, Housing Coordinator. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share some updates. Go to the next slide. So there'll be a community meeting for a potential... Doing okay? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. So there'll be a community meeting on May 8th, which is next week, at 6:30 for a potential new affordable housing on city-owned property at 880 Stone Pine. This next slide is a brief overview of the approximately four acres outlined for potential housing. It would include up to a possibility of 50 manufactured homes, focused on farmworker housing at 30% area median income or extremely low income. And just want to point out that we're in the very early stages, preliminary evaluating this site for housing. But it is something that the city is looking into and working with the county for potential And very excited to share that the city released our housing element, as I know you've all heard. And we essentially released it on April 17th. That opened the first public review for our sixth cycle of the housing element. This is, it'll be a joint work session, rather, on Tuesday, May 9th. It'll be here at the community center. There will be a reception at 6:00 p.m. And the meeting will then start at 7:00. And that's a joint meeting between the City Council and Planning Commission. And the public is welcome to join as well. And we definitely would like as many public comment during this period as well. The cycle was released on the 17th, and that opened and commenced a 30-day public review period. So also just want to re-highlight our need for public input at this time. That public comment period will close on Tuesday, May 16th. And then the city will essentially take those comments into consideration right before we submit our first draft to the state.
Mike, is there someplace the public can read the document?
Absolutely, yeah. So the website that is on the screen here, the hmbcity.com/housingelement. We have the full document, which is 420 pages roughly. And then individual chapters are listed there as well for easy navigation. And then we also have hard copy, if anyone prefers. Someone can view that at City Hall. They're not copies to take home necessarily. And we also have a hard copy at the Half Moon Bay Library. Happy to answer any other questions, but...
Mike, is the Monday meeting Zoomable from the public?
It's a great question. I don't have an answer. I'll turn that over to Matthew.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. And thanks for the question, Harvey. That is the plan. We're still working out the details, but the plan is to post a Zoom link and allow people to at least watch and listen via Zoom, potentially participate. So, thank you.
And I think we're going to hand it off.
Any questions from council, comments? Okay, thank you very much, Mike.
Absolutely. And I know there'll be a coastal trail update here as well.
Yeah, next up, we have our Public Works Director, Maz Bozerginia, to talk about some concerns on the coastal trail.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, so we have witnessed some additional erosion on the coastal bluff last week. Unfortunately, even though we have not been receiving a lot of rainfall in the near term, saturated conditions and eroded, so caused additional erosion. This is just north of the Poplar Beach access point, a few hundred yards north of it. And you can see there on the bottom picture, that was the day we noticed it, Good Samaritan had placed one of the barricades from the further spot over there. But our folks were taking a look and noticed that it was starting to erode a lot more than what we had seen previously. So the top is where, with the condition of it right now, we have it fenced off with the orange fencing and some signage. We are looking at doing improvements, sorry, repairs over there. So we're considering an emergency CDP as well because the location of the trail, especially in the immediate area adjacent to the erosion, we're considering realigning it temporarily and looking at what we can do as far as some of the drainage improvements in the area to rectify this.
Maz, could you explain what a CDP is, please?
Yes. So we're considering an emergency coastal development permit, which would allow us to go in and complete these repairs. My apologies on the acronyms.
Thank you.
And then also, we'll look at other options to minimize further erosion where we can. It's challenging, and obviously, we're not talking about any armoring, anything of that nature. So it's limited what we can do, but we're looking at what options we have and looking to address it. We'll also be doing some e-news outreach to folks about concerns with walking along the edge of the bluff, but also sitting underneath on the beach below. Both can be very dangerous, so.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Maz? Comments? Thank you very much, Maz.
Next slide, please. We have two more brief updates.
Ah, okay.
It should be, oh, sorry. Maz, can you click to the next slide for me, please? Just, we wanted to get a notification out to the community. Yesterday, we published on the website, and we're now sharing it with potential organizations, a request for qualifications to secure a long-term operator for the CARES program. For those that don't know what that is, the CARES program is a program that the city started just over a year ago. It provides an alternative response to mental health and other types of crisis calls to 911 or 988, rather than always having to send sheriff or fire or ambulance. It's been wildly successful, great collaboration with those first responders. And we're moving out of the pilot stage and into the long-term operation stage. So this is something we always knew we were going to do. I want to assure folks, this doesn't mean there's any issues with the program or with the current operator, El Centro de Libertad. It's just always been understood that before we go into long-term operations, it's important to do a public process, allow others to compete for the opportunity to serve the city. So that request for qualified operators is posted on the website now. We'll be sharing it with all of our nonprofit partners and a few other places. And we hope to come back in June with a recommendation for a longer-term contract. So if anybody's interested in learning more, the website address is extremely long. I would just recommend going to the city website and typing CARES into the search bar. There's just a single webpage, and this is right at the top of it. And then my last announcement unrelated to this, unless there's any questions on this item, is just a reminder that this week is Coastside Gives. And Coastside Gives is a really, really important event here on the coast side. It's an opportunity for the community to support local nonprofits. For many of our nonprofits, it's the single most important fundraising activity that happens throughout the year. It all culminates this Thursday, which is Coastside Gives Day. And I'd encourage you to go to the Mavericks Community Fund website, where you can learn more and look up your favorite nonprofit and provide support if you're in town. We have Make It Main Street this Thursday afternoon, and there will be a whole block dedicated to nonprofits getting the word out. So come down, enjoy the afternoon with us. It'll be a little cold, so bring a jacket and bring your wallet so you can support our local nonprofits. So with that, I think we're good with our CM updates.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody remember how much Coastside Gives collected last year?
I believe it was 1.5 million, something like that.
Yeah, it was. And I know that a couple of the organizations picked up like a quarter of a million dollars, you know? Pretty amazing.
It's pretty cool. We've got some local do-gooders that, for lack of a better term, because they do good things, that will match donations, really leverage getting community support, and then they're very generous to support. So it really, I can't underscore how important Coastside Gives is to our community and the services that are provided here. So please, please consider supporting.
Thank you, Matthew. Next on the agenda is public forum. If anyone from the public has anything they want to say, if it is not on the regular agenda, please fill out one of these white cards. First up, we have John Ullam.
Thank you. So you're looking to ban things. And, you know, sometimes that's appropriate. But you're giving excuses for banning stuff because you don't have the money to enforce rules, which is illogical because you're making a rule. One of the reasons why we don't have money to do things like that, so we have to limit our liberties and freedoms, is we spend a lot of money inappropriately. For example, you're still doubling down on the lawsuit over the water and sewage pipe, which no one understands, no one really cares about. And, you know, people can make a real good argument for why we should have lost. I don't understand our argument, but I do understand theirs. But because you make those kinds of decisions, you don't have the money to do simple things. How much would it cost to get the sheriff to supply us with a deputy six weekend days a year? Just so people know occasionally there is a deputy out there. Because they will do it, it's à la carte. They'll enforce any rule that you want enforced, it's legal. And if you pay them, they'll send someone out there. But instead of, you know, being able to do that, we spend money on just stuff that doesn't matter, that doesn't change people's daily lives. You know, you mentioned the trails. Have any of you, any of you walked down the trail that goes underneath the bridge? Because it's dangerous. It was really dangerous for a long time because there was big muck that you would come running around the corner, and all of a sudden, you were stuck in muck that was this deep. I mean, it almost knocked me off the bike the first time. Somebody's gone through there and plowed that muck out, so you got about a two-foot-wide path. But that just gives you no speed till you get underneath the bridge, where you find it's all tore up from the storms. And if you ain't paying attention, you're going to smack into a big chunk of concrete or the tar that's sitting off kilter on that trail. Now, this was two weeks ago. I haven't been out there recently, maybe things have gotten better. But if you go look at the corner over there, you'll see that it has not been maintained very well, that there are big weeds coming out of the grates, that the sidewalk is getting crowded by garbage, the trays, the plants that are growing. We have all kinds of maintenance that is deferred that we can't afford to do. I know you care about the trails, but the trail that goes along Highway 1 is falling apart fast. There are big, huge cracks in it that go way deep. No one's sealing them, no one's maintaining it. I can only assume it's because you don't have the money to do it. So, thank you, I appreciate it. I would hope that you would consider how you're spending money, because you could be doing a lot more good with the money you have than you currently are. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rocio Avila.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and to talk to you. I want to appreciate all the effort that you are doing in order to find a place for making those housing for us. I know that every family deserves a dignified house, and I know that you are making a great effort and a big effort in order to provide that. And I want to request all the community that wants and to support us, that support this need to make an effort in these 30 days in order to provide that support. That they may know all the necessities that we are going through. And I also want to request to the council because of the high rents that we are paying here in Half Moon Bay. If you can do something in order to stop the increase of the rents or something that can stop that. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Lucille. Carolina Carbohall, is that correct? Carbohall.
Carbohall.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for listening with attention to all our needs. As you all know, our request is always for housing and a good housing, honorable housing for all. I want you to know that we are also in a very big fight. On the April 25th. The committee in the Senate, they heard the law SB. SB 567. Es una ley que habla acerca de la prevención de la falta de vivienda. And it's a law that is talking about the provision of a lack of housing. We were in that movement. That movement is seeking for all Californians to have a dignified housing. The Senate also needs to know that there is a great need in California. As you know, we need 1,000 houses in Half Moon Bay at this very moment. In that moment, we could realize that not only we needed, but all California needs that. That this is a moment to do a great change and we need to be doing that change. We need just housing for all. That day, we could see veterans from war that they were requesting also just housing. People that fought for this country that need an indwelling place. Así que debemos de comenzar a pensar en hacer el cambio en nuestro pueblo. We need to start thinking to do a change in the mentality of our people. As I always said, if you need our support, we will provide it. If you need us to put the first stone, this foundation, we are going to do that too. And meanwhile, we start doing our houses, it's good to start just controlling rent. You need to investigate what is the salary of the employees. If with 1650, it's enough to pay a rent in Half Moon Bay. Don't forget that the labor in this town, they are earning 1650. And also less than that, thank you.
Thank you, Carolina. Victoria.
Hi, my name is Victoria Cormack, and I work with frail elderly, veterans, and also farmworkers who are displaced in our community. And I'm asking the exact same thing as these ladies, I'm asking in English, they're asking Spanish. People that speak Mandarin and Cantonese are also asking you to develop a housing budget, a housing structure, and what we'd like to do is also see members of the community on a housing committee. We'd like you to organize one in the next month if you can, and include members of the citizenship of Half Moon Bay to make decisions about how to go forward expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Do we have members of the public on Zoom?
We do. We're going to start with Jan Hansen. Go ahead, Jan.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Jan Hansen, Half Moon Bay resident. I have a comment about a couple items on the consent calendar. Items 1B, amended map of Creekside Court, final map 1602. And item 1E, 555 Kelly Avenue grant agreement. I don't know if it's appropriate to pull those, I'm just thinking that members of the public might like to hear more about those, especially since, you know, housing is a very hot topic right now, there's two important meetings next week, and one of these items, I was very happy to see that the agenda is now being publicized in the community e-news, and it featured one of these items as, you know, a featured agenda item, and I'm not sure the public would realize that some of these are going to go past very quickly in the consent calendar. So I don't know quite how that's handled, but those are my concerns, and I have just a brief comment about each of those items.
Jan, you can share your comment now.
Okay. About item 1B, amended map of Creekside Court. I realized that these consent calendar items are relatively minor ministerial matters in the whole big picture, but I, for one, was frankly just coming late to the, late to the picture in realizing this, I saw a flyer for the 11 new construction homes at Creekside Court, one of the Realtors flyers, new construction homes, high-end luxury homes starting at $2,900,000. I do see a little mention here, models available with accessory dwelling units, but I'm thinking in this climate of, you know, and all the commenters tonight, I haven't heard anybody say, "I would like more $3 million luxury homes." So maybe a little bit of explanation to the public on that item might be warranted. And then my comment on the 1E, the 555 Kelly, is I understand it, this item is accepting a grant in the amount of $1,500,000 to the city, so it's not spending city money, but it's big money, and it's frankly good news, it's a big deal, that I, as I understand this item, we are receiving $1,500,000, and then we're authorized in the allocation of some of these funds to the commercial housing. I personally think that's of interest, rather than just being passed through quickly on consent calendar, and hopefully other members of the public feel the same way.
Thank you, Jan.
Okay, next we have Joanne Rokoski.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Rokoski. I am a member of Coastside Faith in Action and the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. And thank you for once again making the opportunity for us to make public comments on this and prior and future evenings for that matter. I also want to congratulate you on the work that is ongoing relative to 555 Kelly and Stone Pine. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the rental issues that I hope that the city council of Half Moon Bay can work to make some strides in making rental safer and keep people who are currently rented from becoming homeless when they're either evicted or their rents are increased beyond their capacity to pay. On April 20th, I joined six other Coastsiders, several of whom are in the audience tonight, and one of them just spoke. We traveled to Sacramento to attend the O.R.S. Sagrado, or Housing is Sacred, Day of Action, sponsored by PICO, which is the statewide organizing interfaith coalition to which Faith in Action belongs. There were almost 700 of us from all over the state. Many shared painful stories about their housing situations, and together we made 46 legislative visits to urge support of Senate Bill 567, the Homelessness Prevention Act, which is the one Carolina just mentioned. This bill is aimed at safeguarding renters from unlawful evictions without just cause. It provides needed enforcement for landlords to violate the requirements of Assembly Bill 1482, which became state law in 2019. While this and other bills work their way through the state legislative process, there is now a need for local communities to pass legislation that protects the renters in their communities from unfair rent increases and unjust evictions and harassment. And these are actions that the city of Half Moon Bay can take. I urge you to do so on behalf of all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Next, we have Shawna Pickett-Gordon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Shawna Pickett-Gordon. I've been a resident of Montero for almost 33 years. I'm a member of Coastside Faith in Action, and I'm in solidarity with the others tonight who have spoken up for fair housing, especially, I, so I don't want to reiterate a lot that has already been said, but we really need affordable housing. We need affordable in the categories of low income, very low income, and extremely low income, and I really think that we need rent control. Not going to be popular, but this could save so many people from eviction. It just underlies their ability to get ahead, to work, to bring up their families safely, to not have to skip meals and medication. And I also support any local legislation that we can do, both at the city level and on the county level, especially for the unincorporated county properties on the coast side, to protect renters from unfair rents and from unfair eviction. So that's all I had to say. Thank you so much for listening and for all that you're doing. Really very proud that we are going forward on 555 Kelly and on the Stone Pine projects. And I hope that there will be a lot more because we just need lots more. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna.
Okay, we have one more. Our last speaker would be Pastor Sue Holland.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Sue Holland. I'm the pastor of Coastside Lutheran Church. I'm also a resident of Half Moon Bay and a member of Coastside Faith in Action. So I first wanted to say, I've started reading the Housing Element Report, and I'm looking forward to next week's meeting. I wanted to thank the city staff for all the hard work that obviously has gone into this, and also for driving forward on 555 Kelly and on Stone Pine. There are many people in our community, and as Carolina pointed out, also in our whole state, who are in desperate need of dignified and affordable housing. And there are also a whole lot of people who are concerned about the problem for our neighbors. So I don't want to take a lot of time either, but I just wanted to add my voice to the others who have already spoken tonight, and just stress how important it is that we keep our focus on increasing the number of units available, and also on keeping rents of existing units affordable and for fighting for rights for renters. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
We have no more hand raised.
Okay, we move on to our consent calendar. Do any of the council members wish to pull something from the consent calendar?
I would just like staff to respond to Jan Hansen's comments, if you would, before we do motion and second on this, or pull any items. She was talking about, she wanted to know why 555 Kelly was, and why Creekside were both on consent as opposed to regular agenda items, and I think there's a good answer for that, so I'd like to hear staff's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Ruddock, for bringing this up. We're happy to respond. And yes, we recognize that there's always kind of an art to figuring out what goes on consent and what goes on our regular agenda. Sometimes it's very clear-cut. In the case of these two items, and we're referencing item 1B and item 1E, for item 1B, this is actually a project that's been going on for many years, and the item that's before you tonight related to this is very, very minor actions, cleaning up some of the items on the map. There's nothing major happening here. But to the caller's point, I think it is important to point out that though there's 11 units of very high-end development happening here, which, you know, developers that own land have certain rights to develop their properties, and what we do as a city is try to work with them to create developments that have benefits to the community. In this case, there are four units of affordable housing that will be built as part of this project. I was just looking at it with our city attorney. I believe there are two at low and two at very low, which is really exciting. I know that's a drop in the bucket, but for four families, that will be a really important opportunity here on the coast. So again, on that one, the reason it's on consent is the action that is actually taking place tonight is very minor and didn't rise to needing an entire presentation and discussion. For item 1E, yes, the dollar amounts and the subject matter are very exciting. This is an item that has come before the council several times related to 555 Kelly Avenue and the potential for affordable housing on that project, and the rationale for putting this on consent is simply, as the caller stated, it's a pass-through. The county is granting $1.5 million for this project to Mercy Housing, the developer. The city is simply a conduit for moving that money from the county to the developer. We agree, it's exciting, we want people to know about it, but again, I think just a few weeks ago, we had a presentation related to other items on 555 Kelly, and this was just an administrative action. So I know that doesn't satisfy everybody, but that was our rationale, we're happy to talk more about these items if necessary.
Thank you, Matthew. And Councilmember Rhabak.
Debbie's comment and Matthew was what I was interested in, thank you.
Okay, and everyone else on council is okay? May I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Items 1A, way readings of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, amended map of Creekside Court, final map number 1602. Item 1C, display of the mental health awareness flag for the month of May at City Hall to commemorate Mental Health Awareness Month. Item 1D, receipt of legislative position letter. And item 1E, 555 Kelly Avenue Affordable Housing Development, American Rescue Plan Act Grant Agreement with the County of San Mateo. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We now move on to item 2A, introduction and first reading of Feeding of Wildlife Ordinance. We now move on to Item 2A, introduction and first reading of Feeding of Wildlife Ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If we can have just a moment while we get set up, but our Assistant City Manager, John Doughty, will be making the presentation tonight.
Mr. Doughty, are we all set?
I believe so. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I will be brief. You have seen this presentation generally before, so I'll be, again, brief. Request tonight is for the introduction of Chapter 8.08, entitled Feeding of Wildlife, and adding that to the municipal code. If you recall, going back to August of last year, you received some requests from the community asking for consideration of, of an ordinance and/or other actions to address feeding of wildlife by individuals. Concerns around just peace and tranquility, but also biotic and habitat issues and concerns were noted at that point. We've had a series of conversations, workshops, and meetings, and on March 7th, we brought to you a draft ordinance, primarily what you're going to see tonight. And following that workshop, the council did authorize us to return to you with this draft. Again, there are a broad spectrum of issues and concerns here, notably that when we interfere with the wildlife by feeding, by harboring, by doing any number of things, we change those animals and we change the world in which they live, and those changes can create problems. I won't say that absolutely the, the mountain lion sightings around is, is because of, of some of these things, but certainly human activity, garbage and things around, which brings other animals, which brings food that mountain lions like to eat, is a prime example of how we unintentionally can affect the world and see those issues coming around. This also is true when we looked at what's happening with some of the birds, and particularly the concerns and questions about ravens and crows, and how those are affecting other birds and other birds of prey. And this kind of all culminated around to a point of, of looking at an ordinance. So this is a pretty short and succinct ordinance. I think it's appropriate. It was again modeled after Fort Bragg area, looked at many, many ordinances. This one was pretty straightforward and seemed to capture the essence of what we were looking at, again, as another coastside community. And it clearly defines what wildlife is and what it is not, and what basically you can and can't do. One of the things clearly here is that just leave them alone and don't feed them, don't, don't put out food all around, don't encourage scavenging, and do everything possible to clean up around and, and to keep the critters eating what they should be eating and staying where they should be to some extent with that. They're going to come, we have a human wildlife area interface, and it's going to happen no matter what we do. What we did find in the conversations and research and your workshop work, that, that the backyard bird feeders do serve a purpose for the songbird population, and clearly all of our research basically led to needing to continue to allow that kind of activity to occur within limitations. And so basically, this again reflects the conditions and how one should approach your backyard bird feeding and, and addressing those issues. And again, all of these designed around one, natural feeding is, as much as natural can be with being provided seed, and beyond that is to not become an attractant for rodents and other wildlife, and create problems for your own well-being in terms of rats and things of that nature, but also for your neighbors as well. And finally, what we're asking tonight and recommending is you conduct a public hearing, and following that, should you find it favorable to introduce the, on the first reading and ordinance adopting this new chapter 8.08. Thank you.
Good, Jan. We will have public forum. Are there any clarifying questions that council has prior to public forum? Okay, we'll go with our first speaker is Kim.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff for taking the time to hear and consider our concerns. Some of you have already heard my family's experience. With the support of this ordinance, my family's hope that the natural wildlife balance will we, will be restored to the blufftop between Kelly Ave and Potter Street. I can only speak from my family's observations and experiences with the unnatural overfeeding of the pigeons and ravens. From 1992, when we moved into the neighborhood, until late summer, early fall of 2020, there seemed to be a natural balance of hawks, harriers, kites, herons, great horned owls, and barn owls hunting this blufftop area. These birds of prey to help to naturally manage the vole, mice, rat, gopher population of, that exists on this land. During the days I used to watch all these birds hunting the blufftop, now sadly, it is rare to see them. My husband and I watched sunset every night, and once upon a time, we guaranteed to spot hawks hunting and various, hunting from various cypress trees bordering the blufftop. We would also observe other hawk-like birds hunting the same area at the same time. Once the sun set, the great horned owl would appear on the cypress by our home and begin his night of hunting. Now, in the spring of 2023, it is very rare to see any of these birds. More than once, I've watched several ravens harassing hawks and herons while they hunt. The raven population is, has taken over the blufftop, and it seems that the birds of prey have moved away. Not only has the unnatural overfeeding of these birds created a hostile environment for the hawk-like birds and owls, it has created additional financial burden on some homeowners. Personally, our family has spent over $10,000 to remove pigeon nests from under our solar panels, repair damaged solar panels, clean bird waste, and install protective spikes to prevent the pigeons from returning and continuing to live on our rooftop, as well as our son's rooftop. We continue to incur costs to maintain the, the preventive measures we have taken to protect our homes. One only needs to walk through the neighborhood to see other homeowners who have incurred costs to install bird spikes on their roofs, perhaps for the same reason. Also, during the spring of 2022, we discovered the ravens had poked holes in our outdoor seating cushions, removing the stuffings to, to create their nests, another additional cost. The situation seems to be progressing as now feed and bags of feed are appearing on curbs throughout our neighborhood. I know this as I discovered about 15 to 20 pounds of feed dumped on our undeveloped lot in the neighborhood. Fortunately, I've removed it before it became an issue for the birds and animals. In sharing my story with neighbors regarding the dumping of some kind of feed on our property, they have indicated this happens throughout the neighborhood. Also, just last week, I was with a friend when she discovered about a 10-pound bag of feed by her curb. The ravens and other birds had already pecked a hole in the bag and were feeding from it. She removed it before it became more of a problem and attracted other creatures. This has become a health hazard, and more and more people are unnaturally overfeeding the birds and our creatures. This feed and bags of feed will attract wildlife other than birds. By supporting this ordinance, please help restore a healthy, natural avian and raptor population on this coastside blufftop. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Margaret?
I do want to state that I am a planning commissioner, but I am not speaking for the commission. I'm speaking as a citizen on this item. I want to thank, thank you, Debbie, Matthew, and John for meeting with us to learn about this problem in our neighborhood where we have excessive feeding of wildlife. Unfortunately, we do have someone who continually feeds the pigeons, ravens, and crows, causing property damage and negatively impacting other wildlife. We have asked them to stop, and they won't stop for whatever reason. So the unusually high number of birds harass other birds, and they also eat the eggs of snowy plovers, which I know in Half Moon Bay, there's a great effort to try and protect the nest of snowy plovers on our beach. They also eat the eggs of marbled murelles. Please support the community by introducing, introducing this ordinance for a first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. James?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilpeople. So I've lived here for, since 2017, been a Bay Area resident for 30 years. This is the most beautiful part of California, and it's home, and it's, it's something that I care really deeply about. And I live in the community as well, and went through the pandemic, you know, as soon as lockdowns happened, you know, a lot of the wildlife came back and was thriving because, you know, a lot of the tourists were staying home. And I walk this bluff every evening with my dog, and I can see the changes, and I can definitely see when people are just abusing their rights to, as citizens, to, you know, control their own property, but when they're taking buckets and shoveling out, you know, gallon-sized scoops and throwing it into the, not only their property, but also on the bluff and other places around the bluff. It's just ridiculous, and I, I wish we didn't have to have and waste your valuable time. You should be focusing on affordable housing and other more important things on the coast. But it's gotten to the point that it is changing the ecology, and that is definitely worrisome, and we're, we notice it, and we, we ask for your support for this important ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Leann?
I want to thank you guys all really for addressing this. I know it might, with everything Half Moon Bay has gone through from January through this, I, this might seem minor, and, but it's, it is important. It does affect us, and if this gets out of control, as it already has, it's just going to get worse. Some people may wonder why we need an ordinance, and the reason is, there isn't one, and so it's not preventing anybody from going out and feeding anything. We, the state of California has laws preventing feeding of wildlife. You just go into Kelly or Francis Beach, you're not allowed to feed anything. Don't feed the seagulls. Why? Well, we've got snowy plovers there, trying to protect their nests. You go into estate parks in Northern California, you know, don't, you cannot feed the, the blue jays, the blue jays, the ravens, the, the crows. Why? They hunt, and they go after, let's say you've heard of the marbled murelet. They're an endangered species. Why? They're hunted by the ravens. So I also know in the report John put together, which was great, that they're now considered, they're considered natives, or was it not natives, but they're, they weren't always here, and they weren't always on the coast, and the, and the numbers they are. And specific to our neighborhood, there are people who are feeding the ravens and the pigeons copious amounts of cat food. It's cat food. And it's just become such a problem. The, the ravens have taken over, and they've now taken over, there's a huge, I don't know if you go out there, but there's a massive cypress stand, and there, where there used to be lots of kites, and as other people said, the hawks, the redtails, all that, they're gone. You see very few, and I've got, I mean, every time I see a raven harassing a bird, I've, I've got all the video. And so that's another reason, let's just put the balance back. I have a fun fact for you, that when the ravens are overfed this cat food, I've discovered that they actually are burying it now, hiding it in the bluff, in the actual blufftop. And the reason I know this is I have a little dog with a very strong scent, and she has gone around. And first I thought, oh God, someone is poisoning my dog. Not only that, this has happened multiple times. I go up, I look, and I look where, what she, her nose is in, and it's cat food. And it's not just right off the trail, so it's not someone doing that. It's out in the bluff. It's maybe 10 feet out in the bluff, 50 feet out in the bluff. I've got the pictures. So this is attracting probably rats, other vermin that you don't want, and then where are they going? Raccoons out there? You know, we got our mountain lion. Thank you.
Thank you, Leann. Next, we have John.
Well, it sounds like some of these folks are having a problem, but this also seems like this ordinance is aimed at one person. And I don't think that's your role to be going after what one person is doing. I've heard descriptions of food being left all over the place. Well, that's just litter, okay? So you just go out there and enforce the litter laws? Dumping food in other neighborhoods on the bluffs is litter, and it's against the law. You don't need to make an ordinance aimed at one person because somebody is feeding birds in their backyard. I have fond memories of going down to the park with my grandma and feeding the ducks. Your ordinance would outlaw that. How many of you know that ravens, crows play a part in many spiritual and religious festivals? Diwali starts off with a crow. That's how it starts. The crow eats, everybody knows it's time to party. So have you considered that, that you may be stepping on some religious sensibilities? You're talking about crows being attracted to food that's left out, and this causes problems. Well, I walk my dog up at Johnson House all the time, and there are thousands of big blackbirds in those fields, eating something. Are you going to stop that? Are you going to write an ordinance? Are you going to write an ordinance that keeps farmers from feeding crows? Because I don't think you can. How much does it cost to write an ordinance like this? Ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars? Imagine your lawyer gets paid a lot of money to go over it. Imagine staff does a lot of work researching it. Is this really the way we want to spend our money? Is this the best way to deal with this particular problem? There's been a lot of talk about the crows and the ravens are destroying wildlife. I ride to work every day, folks, and I see all kinds of birds of prey sitting on the telephone lines, sunning themselves and drying off. There's a family of owls that live out in the stand, out on the field, out in the wave crest. It's been there forever. I hear owls every night around my house. So I'm not really sure that anybody's got a scientific study to tell you that those crows are doing anything to that. But if they are, then you got to go back to the farmers. I'm sorry for the time. You talked about crows being harassing birds of prey. I've watched sparrows chase them for hours and tell those birds of prey, give up. That's what they do. That's how nature set it up. And then the last bit about the cats, you are wrong if you think the cat ordinance is being effectively adhered to. You just simply are. I see it all the time. There are feral cats all over the place. They're in my neighborhood. They keep the mice out of my house. I used to have two cats. They died, and I had all kinds of mice. Then somebody else's cats came around. I don't got mice no more. So anyways, I know you want to ban it. I know they want to ban it, but I think it's wrong. And I think that someday, someone's going to want to ban something that you care about.
Thank you, John. Okay, that ends a public comment. I bring it back to, I'm sorry.
We have one online. Just one moment. Corvus Corax.
Hey there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I wrote this beautifully funny commentary on this item. I'm not going to read it because I don't have the guts, and some of the stuff that was said needs correcting. My name is David Oblovy. I'm not Corvus Corax. But as some of you may have noticed from a year ago, I have deep experience with diurnal raptors having either trained for falconry or rehabilitated easily fifteen to twenty birds over the last forty years. I wanted to dispel a few rumors here. Ravens harassing predators? Yes, predators harass ravens, predators, or diurnal birds of prey harass each other. It's a territorial thing. It's not uncommon, and it means absolutely nothing. The idea that ravens are burying cat food is creative. Let's just leave it at that. State Fish and Wildlife Code applies everywhere, not just in state parks. There's already a law in place that prevents the harassment of wildlife, which feeding wildlife is considered to be. And it is not particularly enforceable, but it already exists, and your version isn't going to be any more enforceable. So what are you going to do there? As John already mentioned, the city already has a code for the prevention of dumping of garbage or litter or food or anything else. It's a pretty extensive code, and it's very comprehensive. So my question to you would be, if your response is, well, this one woman, and can we look at what we're doing to the other here? You had a vocal minority and a campaign promise and follow-through to punish one woman. When was the last time an ordinance was passed in Half Moon Bay for one woman? All of these neighbors have the right of civil remedy. Debbie, you could at least listen to me politely. They have a right of civil remedy against their neighbor. If they've been harmed, and they can trace the harm to their cushions on their chairs, to this woman putting out food, then they can sue her, and that's what they should do. That's what the law is there to provide for. If she was negligent or did something that damaged their property, then she has every right, or they have every right, to seek a remedy against her. Great horned owls, they don't always nest in the same nest every year. The reason is, a lot of times ravens take their nests, birds of prey. In fact, everything in the wild is an opportunist. They will take advantage of every opportunity they have. So we have great horned owls out behind my house here. They nest sometimes one, two, three years in a row. Other years, they won't be here at all. It's a fact of life. Redtails have never lived in the cypress trees. Those would be red shoulders. And can we just look at what we're doing here, folks? How much money we spent on this? What could we have spent this money on that would have been more effective? Why didn't we just say to these people, enforce the city's garbage code or refuse code, and call it a day? Why are we even sitting here doing this? As always, I thank you for listening. Now have at it.
Thank you, David. We have one more speaker, Rosio Avila.
Yo quiero hablar sobre los leones de montaña que se han visto en Monbridge. No sé si ustedes se han dado cuenta.
I want to talk about the mountain lions that have been sighted in Mon...
Monbridge.
Monbridge. I don't know if you have realized about that.
Necesitamos que hagan algo porque nuestros hijos corren peligro.
We need you to do something because our kids are in danger.
El león de montaña llega hasta la puerta de nuestras casas. Se ha comido un gato.
Mountain lions come to our doors, and they have eaten a cat.
Necesitamos que hagan algo. Sé que es de la vida silvestre y tal vez fue su hábitat antes, pero ahora es nuestro lugar y tenemos que proteger a nuestros hijos de un ataque o alguna persona que en la noche o en la madrugada salga a trabajar.
This is something that is putting us into risk. I know that that is, that might be their natural habitat, but they are just invited. That is where we are living, and it is something that puts in danger to anyone that during the nighttime has to step out and go to work.
Así que por favor espero que hagan algo. Y como el señor dijo de los cuervos, que los agricultores, no creo que los agricultores les digan a los cuervos que vayan a comer o algo, les estén ofreciendo su comida.
As someone mentioned about agriculture, that they might be feeding the ravens, I don't think that the people that work with agriculture are setting food and asking the ravens to come and eat that.
Ese es un gran problema porque nosotros lo hemos vivido en la granja donde se siembra el chicharo. Ya cuando vamos y miramos todo el chicharo que está comido por los cuervos, es una gran decepción para nosotros.
That is something that we have lived in our farms when we used to live there, when we planted like corn, and the ravens or the birds come and eat that corn. It's something that affects us very much.
Chicharo.
Chicharo.
Peace.
Peace. I'm sorry, peace.
Ya lo tradují. Así que yo sé que van a hacer lo que es mejor, pero nuestra preocupación también es el león de montaña. Hagan algo, por favor.
I know that you are going to do the best, but our greatest concern is the mountain lions. So please do something about that.
Thank you, Rosio. I believe that does end public forum. A public forum on the question of the feeding of wildlife ordinance. So I bring it back to council. Are there questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. I wasn't here for the March 7th workshop. I wish I was, so I could have expressed some of my feelings then. My feeling is that this ordinance is overreach beyond belief. I understand some of the issues that people have brought up, but compared to the problems that would be caused by trying to enforce this ordinance, it's just wrong. If a child wanted to feed some ducks on the pond in Ocean Colony, this ordinance would prohibit that person. And as has been brought up, there is one apparently mentally ill person in the Alita Park area who's had real issues, but we have to deal with that person in a way that doesn't jeopardize the rest of the community. So I am opposed to this ordinance and will not vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members?
I'm supporting the ordinance. It's not one person. There are several instances of this in the community where we've received complaints in several different neighborhoods. It is harassment under state law. It's against state law. It violates ecosystem principles. When you're feeding birds, it's a form of harassment. You're changing their behavior patterns. You're introducing changes in the environment through human interaction. I believe it's wrong. I believe nature has rights to. And I'm supporting the ordinance. I've outlined in several different meetings why I'm supporting the ordinance. I'm not changing my mind tonight, and so I will be voting yes.
Anyone else?
I get to actually live for saying what's happening with the crows in our community. So as you may know, I actually have a few chickens. And during the last three months, the crows come over to the farm and eat the baby chicks. So that's out of, I'll say, maybe thirty baby chicks in the last three months, there's only one left. So it is affecting the growing of our crows in our community. I do see them coming to the farm, and they hang out. The dogs are not able to chase them. Crows, very smart. They know when to go for the chicks. And about farming, also, they go for the seed. When farmers are planting any seed, you will see the birds coming over for the seed. It's not that the farmer is feeding the crows or any of the birds. It's just they know, they're very smart. They know where to go. They know how to find the food, and it is affecting. I don't know if any of the community members in the area that have actually chickens, if they're actually dealing with the same thing that I am, and that affects. It's affecting my economy. So I'm, you know, I have a problem with a child feeding ducks, but I have a problem with the crows eating my baby chicks. And I know it's affecting somebody else. Your bank account is being affected by it. You're investing. You're paying for two repairs for your homes. So I am going to support this ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, I am in favor of the ordinance myself, mostly for the reasons stated in the ordinance, that it is harassment of wildlife to feed them. It's changing our natural environment. It's changing our ecology, and I want to see the hawks and the kites and the kestrels all come back. So I am voting in favor of it. May I have a roll call vote, please? Oh, no, we're not. We're not voting, are we? Okay, right. Motion to introduce. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we introduce the ordinance per staff recommendation.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rennick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
No.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are moving on to an update on the John L. Carter Park Improvements Project, CIP, or number 0611.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Maz Musorguina, Public Works Director, I'm here tonight to provide an update on the John L. Carter Park project. So just a little bit of background. This project has been ongoing since, really, the Parks Master Plan was going through the public outreach process. It was identified as one of the unique parks that was underutilized within the city and was identified in the Parks Master Plan as a potential site for revitalization. And that Parks Master Plan was adopted back in February of 2019 by the City Council. The project then continued with design and environmental review, as well as many numerous community outreach events. I have not listed all the other community outreach events, but there were probably, I believe there was over fifteen through the course of the process. And so with that, it all culminated into an approval of the coastal development permit and the approval of the SEQA document, the California Environmental Quality Act document, which was approved by the Planning Commission in December of 2020. There was a minor amendment to address some of the lighting at the time, and so there was a small amendment on March 9th. Then with the help of Assembly Member Mark Berman, we were able to obtain a Prop 68 state grant, and that was approved by the council in December of 2021 for grant funding towards the park revitalization project in 4.75 million. And then ultimately, we got to the construction agreement in May 17th of 2022 toward the contract for construction and other support contracts. With that, as we were going through that process, through the construction, we had some delays, which I'll get to. But obviously, we also had the major winter storms of late December and January, February, March of 2023. We saw a record amount of rainfall and flows. Some of the estimates that I've seen for Pillar Cidos Creek, which is adjacent to Carter Park, had estimates of the storm being a 500-year event, which is a very low probability but very high intensity storm, which was witnessed on the site as well as many other locations throughout the city limits. So these pictures were from the original rainfall in December 31st and the New Year Day, January 1st. You can see on the far-left picture is the staircase that leads down into the park. The entire park is relatively underwater. You can see in the middle picture where the old statue is kind of in the middle behind that orange fencing, and you can see after some dryout period, it still had a good amount of water in the lower-lying areas. In the far-right picture, the only reason I have that pointed out is you can kind of tell, you can kind of see the little half-circle. That's where the concrete, current concrete stage is. So it was still underwater at this stage. Then February and March of 2023, we did see some drying out. But what we witnessed with this particular flood event was the amount of silt and sediment that ended up washing into the site. So it's not just the floodwaters that were the concern and that we're looking into. It's also the amount of silt and sediment that was produced by some of the flows in Pillar Cidos. So we want to make, so what are we doing with that? So let's, just real quick, I kind of jumped ahead, but so this is just a quick graph I wanted to show. This is from the USGS website, and this is, we have a gauge at Pillar Cidos Creek, right at Highway 1. There is a gauge that the USGS maintains and monitors for creek flow and creek heights. And what we saw again was historic winter storms. This, the peak was December 31st, where we had a flow of 2,100, over 2,100 cubic feet per second of water flowing down through that specific portion of Pillar Cidos, and a height of 4.5 feet, 14.5 feet, which is almost to the base of the bridge that goes over Highway 1, that crosses Pillar Cidos and Highway 1. We also had delays with surrounding constraints with the 20 Stone Pine property. We have historically accessed Carter Park through the shopping center, and we have, part of our community outreach was talking to a lot of the community members and stakeholders, especially in the immediate vicinity of the project. which included the businesses and the property owner. Unfortunately, after some initial conversations and negotiations, there was some delay in moving forward with that agreement. That's something that we're currently working on. But what we've done in the meantime is looking at the events, the storm events that we had. What can we do with the design? Are there any considerations we can make to improve resiliency of our park with regards to flooding and debris flows? And so what we're looking at are a couple of items. One is the redesign of the stage area, nothing major, but looking at the construction materials and methods to improve that flood resiliency. We're looking at the anchoring system. We want to make sure that with that much water, you don't have any situation where the pad, the stage would actually be uprooted. So we're looking at making some modifications to ensure that, based on the amount of flows that we saw. We're also looking at the material on the deck surface itself. There are some other alternatives. We're working with our architect, ELS, that we are considering. And rather than having a wood deck where you can have silt and sediment kind of caught in the middle of it, we're looking at alternatives of other materials on top of the concrete pad so that it's one structure. And looking at the ways that we can still provide, you know, fastened, the ability for anybody using the stage to still fasten, you know, stage, stage equipment, you know, different props and different, you know, different backgrounds that they put on for those plays. So we're looking at what we can do to ensure that it's resilient, but also still usable the way that we intended for those groups. We're also looking at reduction in some of the storage facilities and dry utilities in the lower areas, obviously with the amount of flooding that we saw. We wanted to make sure that, you know, it didn't seem feasible at this time to provide that space for storage. I don't think a lot, any of the users want to store their materials down there. And if they did, it would be something that would be required to be removed. And then there's also the maintenance aspect of trying to clean out silt and sediment from enclosed areas. So we're looking at reducing that and making it a little bit simpler for maintenance purposes. Previously, we had designed this project and was approved with synthetic turf. We've taken a closer look at both of those elements. The area that is, the low-lying area right in front of the performance platform, that is, we're looking at doing natural turf. We were trying to reduce the amount of maintenance required by going with the synthetic, but given the fact of the amount of flooding that we see, especially with the last rain events and the potential for this to be more of the normal, we decided it would be best for the longevity to have natural turf in that location. We are looking at synthetic turf for the amphitheater terrace seating areas. Now with that, we're looking at different types of synthetic turf that would be more resilient. They have ones that have the kind of the rubber pellets. So something like that doesn't make sense in an area where may get inundated with water. So we're looking at something that doesn't require that type of infill material. We're also looking at making some, you know, some simpler changes to the restroom facility and the snack bar. Raising the utilities up to a higher elevation, but still meeting our building code is some, one of, some of the minor things that we're looking at modifying. Most of these won't have any major cost implications. We're actually looking at a potential savings in the material costs by reallocating the funding for some of the other pieces. So we're going to work with the contractor and we're working on the budget to see what that looks like and seeing, you know, if there's opportunities to add some of the other elements, like the place structure that maybe we didn't have, we didn't have funding for originally. So that's still something we're considering. And then I'm still looking at opportunities to, of other things we can do to protect our facilities, looking at the materials we're using for some of the doors on the snack bar, you know, things of that nature. We're looking at the lighting, for example, for the terrace seating, basically going aquatic-style lighting rather than having something resistant. And so that way, even with flooding conditions, there's no concern with maintenance issues with regards to some of that, some of those elements. So as far as next steps and where we are kind of right now, I am happy to say that we have received a temporary construction easement from Mariners Church. We have actually been working with Mariners Church for a couple of months now. We have been trying to find the alignment for our water line. Coastside County Water District, when they reviewed the project plans, required a upsize in our existing utility, water utility lateral. And so with that, we are looking at actually pulling off of them. There's a public main that goes to the end of that parking lot where Mariners Church is. And from there, we're looking at utilizing that access to start the project, have some access to the site, as well as doing this necessary step of installing the water line. So that's something that will be going on where we're starting any moment. The contractors have been given the authorization to move forward, and they're doing some final survey work before they start that. So I'm happy to report that we will see, we will start seeing construction in the very near future on that element. As far as the 20 Stone Pine Shopping Center, I just, I will, I will say that we are continuing to work with the property owner to obtain that access. And we are hopeful that that is still something that will happen much sooner than later. But at least this gives us, you know, with the access from Mariners Church, it does give us the ability to start the project and start some of the underground utility work that is going to be critical either way. And then finally, due to some of the other, due to some of the delays and some of the other, some of the other things that have come online in dealing with all the flooding and everything, one of the things that we have not been able to do is engage some of our stakeholders of some of these unfunded project elements. The three specifically that stick out are the entry sign on Main Street, the stage lighting, as well as the playground structure. So we're going to, we're going to take this opportunity to relook at those and engage our stakeholders again and see how we can do some fundraising to incorporate some of those elements, as well as looking at some of our project savings potentially and seeing how we can utilize those. So that's, that's pretty much my update, and I'm happy to take questions.
Maz, can I jump in with just, I just, a piece I wanted to add? Just in case it wasn't clear, you know, Maz talked about some of the considerations and design modifications that are actively being pursued after what we learned from floods earlier this year. But clearly, to anybody who's spent any time at Carter Park, absent this past year's flooding, flooding is a very regular thing there. That is what the topography there is for. It relieves some of the floodwaters that come through Pillar Cidos Creek. We knew that going into this project. We designed, we created the original design with that in mind. This year was more extreme. We don't feel like that's information we can just ignore. And so we're going to take that and build upon that. But it's interesting, as we've researched this, this is a very common use for this type of a property. Amphitheaters and these types of performing arts venues are often built in floodplains. They're actively used during the warmer months, the non-rainy months. And typically during the rainy months, they're not going to be as accessible. And there will be some spring cleaning that happens before you start your season. That was always expected and always planned for. We're just taking the opportunity to refine the design and some of the elements based on what we've learned from this year. Sure, it's a one, you know, a 500-year event, but with climate change, we're expecting to see more of this unfortunately, and we just need to be ready for it. And I believe, and we believe the staff, that the work that we're doing will make this, ensure that this will remain a really great asset to the community once it's built. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, Matthew.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Riddick?
I just wanted to point out that we're going to need some help getting funding for the audio system as well. You mentioned stage lighting, but, you know, we want good audio. So that's going to...
You're absolutely correct. My apologies. It's not just, yeah, it's not just video with the audio as well.
I have a question. The structure of the amphitheater, is that going to force the water to go across into the restaurant?
The terracing of the, of this, of that area does not change the volume. It's actually, so the earthwork is balanced, so there's not a lot of material that's coming offsite. So the volume is essentially the same as what it is today.
Will it be possible to do some cleaning of the creek on that side by the amphitheater and across the creek where the restaurant is?
We can certainly look at it from our, from the park side, but I will mention, this is not on the agenda, but we are looking at doing a Pillar Cidos Creek cleanup and looking at permitting, not just for this area, but for other spots of Pillar Cidos Creek.
Yeah, because I noticed there's a few trees that will direct the water from the creek onto the, close to the restaurant area.
That is correct, and we are, we have been engaging on permitting and with our biologists. So not part of this project, but we absolutely do see the need of a Pillar Cidos Creek cleanup.
Thank you.
Other council members have questions or comments?
I just really appreciate the update, and I think the public does too. So thank you for spending the time on that.
Yeah, I have one question, and that is, because of this last big storm, have we had to reevaluate the kind of maintenance that we're going to have to be doing? So we get another storm in two years, and how, is that going to be a huge cost? Or have we looked at what the cost is for maintenance and for cleanup?
We have, I have looked at it in some high level. It's hard to compare because we obviously have a smaller facility. But I've been looking at numbers at like Stern Grove in San Francisco, see what type of maintenance that they have. And it was interesting, I, there was an article a couple of years ago, there was a massive water main break at Stern Grove, and it had a lot of flooding issues, not due to storms, but for other reasons. And then they also obviously got impacted here. So I've been doing some research to see what that cost looks like. Obviously, it's more than what our existing park would require, but it's something that we feel is, we're comfortable with as part of our normal operating budget. We will, you know, and part of these changes that we're considering also consider maintenance needs. So some of the, you know, that's, and that's the balance. So the natural turf would require a little bit more maintenance on the average, but it's a lot less maintenance than having to replace damaged synthetic. So those are some of the considerations that we're making. And I always think of the maintenance cost aspect of it when I, when we look at that as well.
Thank you.
Can you just remind me, the money that we got from the state through Mark Berman's efforts, what was that, two and a half million?
4.75.
4.75. And what is most of that money, or how has that money been earmarked so far? We're waiting to see.
Construction, construction dollars towards the project.
Right. How much of that has been already spent?
We've, so we've, so through the delay, we've been, we had continuous, continued to source the materials, review submittals for some of the deliverables, because what we wanted to do was, even though we had a delay, we wanted to ensure that we purchased the materials at the cost that was originally negotiated. So we've spent about a million dollars, and a lot of that is materials that have been purchased and are on standby, ready, and waiting to be received at the site.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I don't think we take any action on this. We just listen. Thank you, Maz.
Thank you for your time and patience.
We're moving on to the Spirit of Life Bell sculpture.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, once again. I am pleased to be here to talk about the Spirit of Life Bell project. Joining on Zoom will be Aaron Tormey to talk a little more about what's going on in terms of the City Hall parklet concepts and the work that's going there. So I will focus first on the bureaucratic side of this issue, and then we'll switch over to Aaron to talk about, I think, probably a little more fun aspects of the work. So what we're asking for tonight is for the council to consider formally accepting the donation of the Spirit of Life Bell, which was created by Silvio J. Modena Jr., and to allow the bell and sculpture to remain in the City Hall parking lot. I call it indefinitely, basically until such time as we either have a parklet completed and constructed, or we land on an alternate location for the sculpture. We note that a lot of folks are enjoying that, the bell and the sculpture visiting there. I think you can go in any given day and watch folks coming up and enjoying that. And I don't think the, we've really had any complaints or issues about that one parking space being eliminated. So, and so I think we're good from that perspective. And you've seen this before, but Silvio passed away just at the time of the Pumpkin Festival. And he was a longtime resident Navy veteran, and ultimately, he created bells out of throwaway, high-pressure compressed air cylinders. And I think most of you know that while in the Navy and even beyond his Navy time, he was in the welding and a lot of issues. And that's how he became aware of these compressed air cylinders and working with that. And the bell itself is a large compressed air cylinder. Also, pieces of other recycled material as well make up the bell structure. The offer has been made by Silvio's son, Silvio J. Modena III. And per your approved public art policy, you're to consider really two components, really the artwork itself and then the location. As I noted, with regard to the location, it's a little interesting because of the lack of clarity exactly of where this and how this will be affixed. But I think we've covered a lot of that in the prior conversations. I certainly can talk about it more. As far as the artwork, you've had the pleasure, as well as the community, to see the artwork in itself in situ there at City Hall. And I think it's been definitely an added benefit to the community as a whole. And again, this is what the bell looks like at its prior home. And again, you, as the council, in October allowed the bell to be located temporarily. And that temporary time ran out in December 31. Obviously, since December, we have had a little bit on our plate and a few issues coming around. But it was really time for us to take up this issue of the, first, the donation itself, but also just affirm whether we can continue to allow the bell to remain there. And again, this was placed here and continues to be here on loan, still owned by Silvio Modena III, until we actually accept the donation. So again, part of this initiated some conversation within the Parks and Rec Commission, within the community, in terms of looking at the idea of some form of place and space for acknowledging service to community and country. Steve Kacucci has been working pro bono with a community group with Aaron and others. Many of you know the others. I won't go into those, folks. Aaron can introduce those, her, in her presentation. And she, again, is here to make a brief report on sort of her status and where she is with that work. So as we sit, we are recommending accepting the donation of the piece of art from Silvio Modena III to affirm the continued temporary placement of the sculpture and ultimately to accept a report from Aaron Tormey, who will come up next in this effort. I guess I would suggest perhaps at this point, before we switch over to Aaron, if there are any just clarifying questions, that might be the best way to go and then allow Aaron to proceed on the other conversation.
Yeah, I have one question. There is a support, a triangular, pyramidal support. Is that part of the bell? If we accept the bell, must we accept that support?
That is all part of the sculpture itself, and I'll put it back to, to, well, there's that one. But this is probably the best way to see it. And you can see that there's architectural components to those, to the legs, to the, it's actually four legs and all, and also to the top. So it's all part of the structure. It's not just a bell.
It's not a support for the bell. It's part of the sculpture.
It is both. It is support for the bell itself and supports that, but it also is an architectural, an art component to the sculpture. So that's why we've, we've... So that's why we've, we've always sort of structured this as a bell, but it's really a sculpture, because it's not just the bell hanging. You can see the bells, John Mueller has, has a smaller Navy bell that's not part of this whole intricate design, but, and there are other places as well. This one is one large piece, both the bell and the structure, which constitutes a sculpture.
Thank you. No, let's hear from Erin then.
Great. And Erin, just let me know when you want to, me to move the slide forward, okay?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I, this is Erin Tormey. I am coming in Zoom. I apologize for not being able to attend in person. Mayor Penrose, I just want to circle back to your question about the, the sculpture in general, and want to point out that when you're looking at the structure, what you're actually looking at are, in that, in the base, are parts of the Ocean Shore Railroad. There's historical significance to every single piece of metal that you're looking at when you're looking at that bell. The, the, the base is created out of steam pipes from the old Ocean Shore Railroad and then other steam pipe, thanks from that area. The clapper for the bell is a universal joint out of a catterpack, oh, excuse me, a caterpillar tractor. The, 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 the big hook that's holding the bell onto that structure, which was designed specifically to manage the weight of that bell and hold it in balance, is an old hay hook off the Arata Ranch. The, the universal joint came from Cascade Ranch. Silvio was famous for having hay hooks, ice tongs, parts of engines that would have otherwise gone into our landfills, go in his backyard and be transformed into these gorgeous pieces of work. So I just wanted to point out the historical significance of all the components that make up the bell.
Thanks.
That might, that might help. When we met the last time, and we, you, I heard from several of you that you were very interested in a lot of public input, so we put together a group of folks and did that very thing. John, if you want to advance to the next slide. Seven of the 10 public events were, we managed to accomplish. Obviously, we all went through the winter, we all went through, so several of the, the ones that were canceled due to weather, you can see at the bottom, but we take, sorry about that, took the opportunity, seven different times, to put in front of the community the, just sort of concept of the idea of the parklet. Three designs that Steve Kocucci, again, pro bono, put together in collaboration with members of city staff to, as it was a very serendipitous process, every time we went out there to look around and, and think about how to better use that space and ameliorate the, the serious issue of the very dangerous exit onto Main Street. It seemed like someone from city staff walked out, and we got great information and a lot of great input and support, and then a couple of other meetings. But as a result of all those, Steve and Chad Hooker, who's also part of the community group, took the information that we got back from the city and came up with three different, just general concepts. We took them out to the inaugural Veterans Commemoration, which happened on the 10th of, of November, and I think it's significant to, to say this as often as possible, that one of the results of the, of this project, which is a beautiful piece of art designed by a veteran, designed to be a very resonant focal point of a tribute to our veterans and to service of, you know, both community and country. The event that happened on the 11th, sorry, on the 10th, is the first time in the history of the city of Half Moon Bay that any dedicated event specifically to recognize the, the service of our veterans, that was the very first one ever. There were quite a lot of folks at that event. We had 68 individuals that participated in the, in the survey. John, if you want to move to the next slide, we also, through that event, connected with Russell Bissonette, who's the, the post commander out here on the coast, and he's also the Regional Director for Veteran Services for the Seven Bay Area Counties. Connected us with the, the Veterans Resources events that were happening at the library, so up there on the upper left, you can see we are at one of those events. The picture down on the right is doing the survey in Situ, that was during the first Make It Main Street of this year. And then this one is, was the last of the public outreach events that we did at the farmer's market on opening day this year. So at those seven opportunities, we had a total of 426 unique individuals who showed a ton of interest. We had zero percent people thinking that this was not a great idea, but 426 individuals, primarily from the coast side, that participated. So, John, if you want to move it to the next slide, we'll go through these fairly quickly. There are three basic, general idea designs for the space. Each one of them, this one was a much more basic idea, real simple, very linear. John, if you want to move ahead, the next one was a more formal garden design. The next one, John, if you want to move ahead, is, was a much more kind of flowy, organic idea. Each one of these, you can stay here for a bit, John, each one of these designs, those green circles that you see are mature trees. The little kind of blue blobs in the middle are, is seating, movable seating. The different kind of lines and paths that you see, it's just different materials, different types and styles of stone that sort of move everything through. There were several things that the city designated as being really important. One of them was to maintain a sight line through the little parklet, so it was really clear where, that there was parking on the Johnson Street side, and also a clear line of sight to the historical assets of the community, so the jail and the museum that's underway, and a real easy flow through there. Each of the designs takes the two parking spaces that were immediately adjacent to the, to the City Hall building, and moves them to the back, if you can see that, where there's the, that, we have two ADA parking spaces where, John is moving the cursor around. So each one of the designs had, doubled the amount of bicycle parking in the community. Each one of the designs has a doggy deal with it station, also something that's lacking in our community, and a, a number of different, you know, components that just generally take a relatively small space, but each of them have and center the bell as, as a focal point, with seating around it, and it's, it's a little bit in different spaces each time, but the idea is to make a quiet place that's, that was lots of opportunity for people to stop, reflect, and, you know, be a little grateful, maybe. We have a, a number of things that are sort of down the line that we're hoping we'll be able to accomplish with, in, in terms of maybe having this be an interactive sort of thing, where we can community source information, because there is no resource where we could ever get, you know, a, a list of names and folks who have served, because so many on the coast side have over the, over the decades. And anyway, John, if you want to scoop to the next one, we'll just kind of show, going to show you really briefly, not all of them, but the general idea about what we asked folks. So what you're seeing here are from two different events. We just asked people where they lived, if they lived in Half Moon Bay, on the South Coast, in the unincorporated part of things, or if they were visitors. And as you can see, primarily, most people, and all of them, were coming out of Half Moon Bay area, and Montero, Moss Beach, El Gornada, a few from the South Coast, and depending on the event, visitors. There were a lot of visitors at the Veterans Commemoration, which was kind of fun. Also, something of note, at the Veterans Commemoration, there were veterans from all the way back to World War II, from every single, where we fought, and every branch of service, which was lovely. Then we just asked them what, which of, everybody hit a dot, and which of the designs felt more resonant to them. And as you can see here, this was pretty much the way it went the whole time. The individuals in the community really seemed to resonate with this more kind of flowing, organic, natural space. And then the, the other question that we asked folks, we just, three questions, is which element of the concepts was most important to them? And you can see that there, there's a lot of this kind of all over the map. That second column in is bicycle parking. I'm not sure if you can see that, but the questions that we, that we asked folks were, in terms of those elements, for, if it's hard to read, are, the one to the far left is that the veterans tribute as the focus of the space is the first one, and then reading across, it's bicycle parking, seat walls, so that's permanent seating. The second one is tables and chairs, and then there's greenery, plants and trees, and then the last one is visual access to the historical features and parking. And as you can see, in pretty much every one of the opportunities that people had to provide feedback, it was overwhelmingly, I think, if you want to go to the next one, John, overwhelmingly, that, that more organic design and the veterans as, the veterans tribute as the focus and greenery. And of course, like, all those things in between are all really important too, but we noticed that it was very obvious that it was, in each of the outreach events that we did, that it was incredibly important to people that, that we focus it on, on that idea of a tribute to service, that it, there be lots of organic, green, natural, flowing spaces, and that people seem pretty turned on by the bicycle parking, and just a place to sit and relax and enjoy the downtown community. So we took all that information, and Steve is right now, this is not it, but he's, this is sort of another kind of like, taking all that information, could we, like, make it a more, you know, get the community everything they want. There were lots of, if you can see at the side, on the Main Street side, so that'd be the left of everybody's screen, lots of folks commented that they'd like to see it, we, was it all possible to save, you know, to keep the two mature strawberry trees there? So move those back in, you know, there was one design that had one out, one design that had them all out, a little bit more greenery, and move the seat walls and things, anything that was permanent, off to the sides, so that there was a wider path down the middle. Because one of the things that people seemed really concerned about was where we're going to put Pancake Breakfast at Pumpkin Festival. So right now, the, the, this idea of taking the input that we got from the community and creating a, a final, or not final necessarily, but a concept design that, that really captures the gestalt of the moment and the mood of the community is our next set of steps. And then the, the next slide down, John, is just a quick list of the people that are, are working with this, but it's very, very incomplete. Sally Benson pictured there is Silvio's widow, who lived here her entire life, Russell Bissonette, Chad Hooker, Steve Kocucci, Lisma Coffey, Christina King, Dr. Marshall, myself, and Joe Cutchett is standing in the, Santa Reddy, waiting for us to kind of move forward. He's offered to be a substantive partner in making this happen. So that's where we are right now, and I'm certainly available if you have questions or concerns, or anything else you'd like to know from me.
Thank you, Erin. Council, any questions?
I mentioned before, I would love to have the emphasis be on community support or community volunteers, as opposed to just veterans. That's my two cents.
Anyone else? Okay, my other thing that I was thinking was that we could also use the space to emphasize our historical heritage, and somehow use the wall space for murals that might reflect our heritage, so that's thinking that I had. Okay, so our, our job now is to accept the donation.
Is there anyone on public comment? We should just check.
I, I apologize. Public comment?
No online speakers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Catherine.
May I have the motion read, please?
I move that by resolution, we authorize the city manager to execute a public art agreement between the city of Half Moon Bay and Silvio, Silvio Modena III, formally accepting the donation of the Spirit of the Bell sculpture, created by Silvio J. Modena Jr., and affirming the continued temporary placement of the sculpture in the City Hall parking lot until such time as a permanent location is established by a subsequent resolution of the city council.
Second?
You have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reddick? Yes. Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
And Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Was there a third part to the resolution?
There, there was one thrown in there, it was just to accept the report, but it's really not, it's.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that. We have accepted the report of Erin Tormey, and thank you, Erin.
And that was not part of the, of the staff report, it was sort of a later add.
Right, I just saw it.
Apologize.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute and no longer break, and everybody has to be back by 9:15. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Today, we are presenting Today, we are presenting the financial and treasurer's report. We do these presentations quarterly, and this is the third quarter that has ended in March 31st, 2023, which is 75% through our fiscal year. Short agenda tonight, discussing the revenues and expenditures for the general fund, recapping reserves and fund balances for the end of the fiscal year, and then finally, the treasurer's report. This presentation is very high level as a summary, but the reports in the agenda packet have more details and analysis. Starting with revenues, here are our major revenues ending as of March 31st. In transient occupancy tax, we had budgeted 9.6 million. We're at 5.5, which is about 58% of our budget. Compared to last year around this time, it was at 58. So we're right in line in what we budgeted for. Now, I do have to note that our actuals have fallen in the past few months, and I'll show you on the next slide. But we are receiving what we're expecting. Property taxes, we had budgeted 3.8. We received 2.4, which is 63% of what we budgeted for. Now, last year, we received some big one-time payments in property taxes, so it's kind of screws, excuse, excuse me. Skews the last year's budget. So instead of 48, we're looking at 57%. And with 63 is we're right in line. We may do a little bit better, but there are some pending variables. Sales and use taxes, we've received roughly about 55% of our budget, which is percentage-wise, less than the previous year. This may be signaling a underperformance. As I mentioned at the priority setting a few weeks ago, our sales tax forecast was recently downgraded, roughly by about 200,000. So now we're starting to see it here. It's not breaking news to staff, but it is something that we're considering for, as we get into budget development for the next year. Overall, we have received 14 million in revenues or 65% of our budget. Now for TOT specifically, this is our chart of our revenues by month. The darker teal columns are for this year. The gray columns are for the previous year. You can see for the first five months or so, we've been beating our last year's numbers. In November and December, we've came up a little bit short, but not by much. January, we beat the number, our last year's numbers. But February, we came up short by about 140,000. This can mean, this could be because of the storms. This can be because of the shooting. It can be kind of one-time things. But also, it's possible that it could mean that our revenue's economic activity is slowing down. If economic activity is slowing down, we will see it in our sales taxes and in our TOT taxes. On the expenditure side, we're looking pretty good. We have 73% of the budget. Each operating budget spends differently, but we generally want everyone to be under 75% of their budget. The only thing of note here is the non-departmental line item, which is third from the bottom, 52,000. That is roughly what we spent for things that we weren't anticipating. So visual and community support surrounding the shootings, and then supplies, things that we've already expended for addressing the winter storms. As a reminder, the winter storms, we have, the last estimate we had for damages was about 1.6, and we're working with FEMA to seek reimbursement. And finally, here we have the reserves and fund balances with the reserve budget. Reserves total 9.8 million, and unassigned funds are at 5.1, estimated for June 30th. Now, as a reminder, it was mentioned at the priority setting that we have some big-ticket items that will potentially eat away at the unassigned funds, mostly the expiration of ARPA funds and the increases in public safety. As of right now, it looks like going into next year, unassigned funds would drop to under 1 million. But it is nice to know that we're going to end this year looking pretty good. Treasurer's report. This report just details out the cash balances that the city has at a particular date. This is required of the state for us as a city. On March 31st, we had 50 million. 14 of that is general fund monies. The average weighted yield for the quarter was 2.32. Generally, what that means is for every $100 we have in the bank, we get $2 of veterans' interest. From the, that's an increase from the prior year of less than 1%. And this is directly because of the Federal Reserve raising interest rates. With that, the recommendation is as follows. Accept the financial report and the treasurer's report for the quarter ended on March 31st, 2023.
Is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council for comments or questions.
I would just say that this is largely what we saw at the priority setting session. So it's really nothing new since that meeting.
That is correct, essentially.
Thank you, Kevin. Do we need a motion on this?
Yeah.
To accept. May I have that motion, please?
I move that we accept the financial report and the treasurer's report for the quarter ended on March 31st, 2023.
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We move on to commission committee updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John Daddi will just give a quick update on a recent recreation commission meeting.
Finally understood what he was trying to say. Get up here and talk about the Parks and Rec Commission. We had a very good meeting last Wednesday with the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. We received a report from Scott Phillips and Tom Conroy on Magnolia Park, and Councilmember Reddick was in attendance. We appreciated that, and as well as a host of other folks from the community. And, gosh, I love this. And that item, we're going to come to the May 16th meeting with the council to also present much the same presentation that was made to the Parks and Rec Commission, but to give you an update as to where we are. And that will also coincide with your initial conversations on capital improvement and capital budget with Moz and the Public Works crew. We had a very lively and interesting conversation through RCD folks in the first flush and a lot of stormwater issues. And it was a very interesting conversation and lively about, you know, picking up after your animals and stuff in various places and what to do, but very informative and very lively conversation. Had a very interesting conversation regarding the commission's interest in pursuing additional art efforts and expanding art in public places and around. And so they're going to be considering in their next meeting whether to form a formal subcommittee of the commission to focus on arts and in the community and the public places. So that'll be, to be determined exactly what that looks like and how that ends up. And finally, we did give a report on, a little bit on the Johnston House and relationships with Mid Peninsula Open Space District. And Mike Williams came and was there in present, which we really appreciated, and had a conversation there. That was in part to alert them, and I'll take the chance to alert you that we are working on and finalizing an MOA or memorandum of agreement with them to still establish what our relationship is and financial relationships for moving forward with master planning of the Johnston House, Train Depot area, which is pretty exciting stuff as well. And that concludes what we talked about. Thanks.
Any questions from council? Thank you. We move on to possible agenda items for future discussion. Does any council member have anything?
Just kind of a simple item. And I don't, I think staff could probably do it themselves, create the letter, but I think it's time for the council to take a stand on the necessity for the county to deal with the county dump. You know, there's been increasing erosion out there at the end of Seymour Ditch. There's been previous incidences of, you know, bluff, sloughing off and exposing contents of the dump. The county has produced a couple of reports in the last couple of years. No action. We have met some of the stakeholders and city staff talking about how to deal with the flooding on Seymour Creek, and a key piece of that is runoff from the county dump. So I think the mayor needs to send a letter to the county staff and elevate the item, the issue of the dump cleanup. You know, there's been, you know, talk between staff, yada, yada. But I think it's time to, you know, make a political move, if you will, and elevate the discussion and the need for the county to actually focus resources on this issue.
I think that makes a lot of sense. So I'll need some help writing that letter from staff.
Yeah, we'd be happy to prepare that. Do we want to bring it back, a draft of it, to consent at the next meeting? Or do we think we just draft a letter and?
I don't think that's necessary. I think it's something the mayor and staff can put together.
Sure. I think we can do that in the next week and get it out to the agencies.
I just think it's time to deal with it. It's just.
Great.
You're right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone on city council have a report? Councilmember Rarback?
I took a shift on Meals on Wheels with the Senior Center. I had done it before. I find it really enlightening to see how helpful the Meals on Wheels program is, especially some of the shut-ins who just look forward to getting a meal once a day. It's a real positive contribution that the Senior Center is making. So I'm glad I did it.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right. With that said, I will adjourn this meeting.